The microphone. I'll put the post job in front of it. So we don't have to.
I can't hear anything. Six o'clock P M. This is the regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think we're sealed by the United States of America. Thank you for the regard, for which we stand. On the nation of God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. Members of the President, me myself, Chair Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Levinhans, Professor Michael Albert, Township Manager Julian Highwica, industry coordinator Diana Salvi, Conservation and Recreation Director, Dr. Alex Jackson, Engineer John Tressler, and our Finance Director Bonnie Winters. Solicitor Ron Karasak is excused this evening as he has a standing meeting. And we changed our schedule. There was a standing executive session this evening, honestly, for five minutes preceding this. As there were some legal filings in the back nine matter. That's all that was discussed. Leave collection is now through December first. Last time we talked about the road closure on River Road between Hollow Road and Waring Drive. They completed most of the work that required the closure, so there's no closure tomorrow. They should be done with the work after that. That's on our Facebook now.
There will be flags there tomorrow.
Yeah.
Flags, but it'll be open.
Right. Okay. Minutes. I'm gonna entertain a motion at table, but it's set to the minutes to the next meeting. Do you want to hear that motion?
Motion to table.
Motion by Mr. Levinhans. Your second?
Our second.
Second, Professor Albert. Questions? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
All right.
Bills totaling seventy-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and five cents. That is between the red occasion from the last set on, I guess, in between the last two meetings. And then we have today's set from both the General Fund and the Esquire Fund. Do you want to hear a motion? Motion to approve. So Levinhans, second. Second, Mr. Albert. Questions?
And I meant to ask this on the last thing. Uh. Is that for one part or not? Thank you. Is that a second question?
Yes. And in March.
Okay, and that's just people. Hello, who are you?
Yeah, this was, this was just a later, the one you're referencing was from one of the individuals earlier on in September, like the last one that didn't get the invoice.
Are they, are they? How are they paid? As contractors, okay?
Yes.
And I know.
Ten ninety-nine, right?
But that's done for the year.
Yep.
It is, okay.
Yeah. And the hope is to do it a little cheaper next year.
And in.
We're actually charging an hour, you know?
It depends on the person, I think.
Correct. We were also planning to bring it in-house next season as ten employees.
How do we find these people? Where'd they come from?
Uh, they're affiliated with the Constable Association.
Oh, okay.
So they're either deputy constables or full-time constables or armed bailiffs from Leonard County courthouse.
With lead time, knowing it's really a summer job.
Yeah.
You can find some people for wage cheaper.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good attempt. Question, just kind of to be back to my first team question. So since we know that constables don't really have any ability to kick, you know, to they're not state troopers, and if anything needs to happen, you have to call the troopers in. Are you guys planning to go the same route and kind of recruit from the same talent pool, whereas you have people associated with the constables or like you said, like armed bailiff type people, or are you opening it up? If you can get somebody cheaper, who can, you know, has the same abilities, so to speak?
Sure, I mean, they, they do have the ability to enforce rules that we designate them to, but our thought was to take it in-house and potentially have, at least on like the busy or holiday weekends, have a constable. Just one that rotates around rather than that be the presence everywhere.
More of the weekends.
Yeah.
Fourth of July, weekends when you're expecting a influx, going a little bit extra people.
We probably won't be posting for that until, I'm gonna guess, four or five months from now.
Okay, but just to confirm, so they just make sure I'm understanding, so, but they, they don't have power really to do anything, right?
They can't make the move.
They, yeah, like they can't, they can't, like.
They, they can absolutely cite folks. We don't have.
We don't have an arresting.
No, and we didn't provide that to, we didn't designate them for that.
Tickets, yes. Right?
Yes, they can issue tickets.
What do the tickets do?
I mean, they would citation, take you downstairs. District judge. Violation of the park ordinance.
So it's actually a thing?
Yes.
Like a real thing?
Yep.
Okay, Jacob, I have a question, so like, next year or whatever, when you're opening the bike park in the Frisbee Park, then you're saying you're rotating. But what happens at nighttime? Does anyone go through these parks at night?
No. They are locked up and gated at night.
And you're gonna be able to do that to the Frisbee Park and the Bike Park?
Yeah, we, we do it right after the Bike Park.
At the, at the entrance, yes, you could drive on the grass and get in if you really wanted to.
Right. For a back bullet.
I mean, there, there could be other, other changes potentially, but yeah, we already do make sure the parks are locked up at night. Any other?
Three motions to approve of the bike, we did, right?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have no solicitors support this evening, but Ron did provide the conditional approval form for the Widmoreland and Elwin Plan that we'll get to later. So now at this point, I will turn it over to John. Do you have anything to note?
Uh, there's not a lot since last week, although I can say that we had a meeting this morning with the coordinator for the Green Mountain Bridge project that we're working on, and we're continuing to progress on that project. We submitted plans today to the D E P for the D P eleven permit, which we need. Uh, Missy is continuing to schedule and conduct interviews on Bike Park Master Plan. And that's about what we did in the past week.
Thanks. Julian, anything to add, Commander, with work?
Um, just briefly, that we're in the process of pursuing an analysis statewide grant, but I'll talk about that a little bit later under the reservation.
Awesome. Thank you. Pat, you wanna talk about the V A C? I know you have your meeting tomorrow.
Yes, we have a meeting tomorrow, but there, what's the project that they worked on? Some, some of the members worked on, asked, yeah, were Mr. Hart right here to report on that?
That's on Brett.
Uh, we're working on an environmental and community assessment document which defines the various criteria for designation industrial parking. Junkyards, general, a whole series, a whole list of environmental assessments. If you guys want us to believe the documents, pretty, pretty much wrapped these, you can shut the eyes. We're also, we've also updated the uh, open space inventory. List, which is, contains about ten different landowners and we're, we're just figuring out exactly, we had boiled it down to who's, who's the actual
Sure.
Open space list that was created by the previous E N C I group. We were able to color down to the pertinent project, pertinent land that is still open space that's still there. We may or may not want to proceed with anything in terms of purchasing or anything, but we just want to update that list and have that for you as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Mazanati is excused. We don't have anything new to report on hiatus or six eleven. Supervisors, any comments?
Oh, right.
Okay. Also, even while go to Alex to talk about data center criteria. He wanted a little bit more guidance. Uh, he highlighted literally a couple of things before us, in front of us. He wanted more guidance on before we have a more in-depth discussion than the draft ordinance.
Yeah, I, I, I went ahead and incorporated a lot of the changes that the board discussed last week into this current document that you have before you. And yeah, I'm looking for some, some guidance from, from the board here. I, this is round three now of the, the data center criteria. And, you know, for example, so the board should have this document. I don't know if you wanna put it up on the big screen for the audience or just have a quick discussion and stuff. How do, how do you wanna proceed?
I mean, if you.
You wanna go over these, the notes? Is that your main thing? I think the main thing are the highlighted sections in this document.
Okay.
The notes are relative to those highlighted sections.
Yeah, yeah, if you have the document handy.
Yeah. So you know, basically the board discussed permitted use versus conditional use and there's some discussion about market feasibility of restricting it to square footage. And so my understanding was there was the possibility of having data centers as permitted in the M one zoning conditional use in the E E zone. Is that still how the board would like to proceed with this use?
At least with the, the draft, I'd like to see it that way. I mean, that makes the most sense.
I agree. The other major change here in this version is that there's now a section three for submission checklist for data centers. Um, the board had discussed, because there's always criteria, this is just sort of like a, a cheat sheet. As soon as somebody comes in and wants to submit a data center to your township, they have to look at this list and this will give them a good idea of what they're in for. Is that still something the board would like here, or do you wanna just delete that and just let the section speak for itself?
I, I think, I, the reason I wanted it at the top was I just think it made the most sense from a developer standpoint to, to read that and then for us to understand. You know, that all these regulations are to be taken together and not piece by piece.
Hmm, I assume that is for when it's a conditional use, because otherwise it's permitted. And they wouldn't have to submit this, right? They just have to submit the land development plan.
Not necessarily, so what my thought was, if they were permitted, regardless of whether they're conditional or permitted use, all of them have to comply with this.
Correct, but this is submitting a checklist, right? This is a checklist, do they? Okay.
So what I was going to say is.
Is there approval process associated with the checklist? You just submit and you're done.
No, so you have to comply with all these things, which highlight the top line of the various screening, the residential setbacks, things like that. But my thought was conditional use hearing is really supposed to provide the opportunity to more closely regulate the use as it applies to that space when we know it's going to have a higher than, you know?
Correct.
A, a more expected impact than in the M one, so. I thought that would be helpful and something we'd probably talk about more on the nineteenth, not nineteen, December, uh, well, ten?
Ten, it's in the.
At December tenth.
My, my only question on this, this section, submission of a checklist, is if there's a submission of checklist and it says things like must provide evidence, there must be an analysis of that evidence and a determination if it meets the criteria or not. So does that mean that the, you, you must get a permit in order to submit? Because then you'd have to add that.
No, because you can't do that. My, my thought was this would just be the comprehensive list of what they needed to submit, including I don't know if we'll have the.
But if you don't have a way of saying you can't do it if they submit everything, how do you know if, if, if there's sufficient evidence in, in number B or if must thoroughly demonstrate how the data center utility will meet it, well, how? Who's determining that? Man, it's all well and good, right? But if you're just saying, as long as you submit this checklist, you're allowed to have it by right in, I'm talking on M one. I'm not saying they shouldn't have it by right in M one.
Right.
But why would you do all these things if there's no opportunity to actually say, oh, you just said, I think it's a really good idea, you know, that's what you filled in for part C.
So you can have supplementary regs for permitted use, like we did for airports.
Right?
Because they didn't require the condition which we may or may not put out. But they did have to comply with all the additional regulations. I guess my point is conditional use, I think we need more objective criteria that will relate specifically to where it's going to be. I think these uh, should be met regardless of the status.
Correct.
So they need to be subject essentially to the engineer's approval, just like any other land development that's by right.
But that's under land development. But if they're not going through a conditional use and they don't, there's no approval process.
They're still gonna have to go through land development.
Right.
Regardless of what.
So here's a question, theoretically, if you already had a big building there, like let's say theoretically Bygon wanted to convert their building from what it is.
Yeah.
To become a data center. I, I haven't. to become a data center. I I have no objection to that. You're welcome to do that.
Sure.
Just saying, I mean, there's an academic purpose. There's no land development plan. Well, it's a change of use only.
I gotta I gotta check your ordinance. I know in Pocahonton Township, uh, it clearly states if there's a change in use, you've got to go through the land development process. Because the number of parking spit, for example, if I gone wanted to change it to a super restaurant, there is
Right, and they need more parking.
They need more parking, they need different access, so they gotta go through the land development process.
Well, I mean, I guess, no matter what, you have to go through land development, then fine. But then, wouldn't this just belong in land development?
I mean, this, no, I I would say, I mean, John, maybe I'm wrong.
The way this is framed, it sounds like you're applying for a permit. There has to be some, we went through this with the when we were talking about the signage ordinance. Because that, uh, not signage, or I don't remember, uh, was it signage?
Lighting?
Yeah, it was signage. Some of the signs required a permit. So I want to make sure if there's things that require that permit, what was the guidelines by which the permitting officer would determine whether or not they met, they fully met and required in that checklist. Not just that it was submitted, but that this talks about thoroughly demonstrating. So who's determining whether that's thorough enough demonstration? Um, if it never goes before supervisors and never goes before the engineer, it's just going to the permitting officer in that case. In this case, you put this under the ordinance of of zoning, I guess, right? This is in zoning?
It's a necessity in the zone.
And it never goes for conditional use. I mean, I'm sort of asking this because I just don't know the process. If I at what point would you review these and like, they really didn't demonstrate this during land development, right?
Well, there was a couple. You brought up a couple of points. One, without objective criteria, it would be a subjective analysis by myself or the planning commission or even the board.
Right, even that, but as long as someone's reviewing it, I'm sort of okay with that, but carry on.
Okay, um. The zoning ordinance only really tells an applicant where he can build or utilize, even if he's converting an existing structure, uh, a data center. And like I said, uh, if it's never been a data center before, he's got to go through the land development process, at which point you know what the bedding is like, you saw what it was like for just that garage.
Yeah, it's rigid.
I understand. So a data center is going to come in under far more scrutiny, I would believe.
Of course, just so long as. I, yeah, I guess that's my one thing. I I guess it's pretty good. The only example where that would happen is literally Bygones and.
Let me ask John my way. I I think I know what you're getting at, which is why are we having this if it's already going to be conditional use? I think they should all be subject to these requirements.
That's not what my point was. That's not what.
What I was gonna say, they all need to be subject to that, whether it's permitted or conditional. But I think we need to make clear, like you said, who was to be the arbiter of that. And I think when we already have other by right uses that have to go through land development regardless of its conditional or permitted status, it already has to go through the engineer.
I don't think our our ordinance, but maybe I'm wrong. If you change the use and it's a by right use, I don't think you need to go for land development.
You need to get you need to get a change of use permit at the minimum. We do have that and that goes to the zoning office. So if you're denied there, then you have to appeal that to the zoning hearing board. So that happens. Now, what happened in previous cases, there were people that snuck by by saying, oh, I'm renovating this. And then they renovated the other half of the building to change the use completely. I don't want that. But I I think we just need to make sure that it would be reviewed like you're suggesting. But I just, I never thought about it.
The reality is no one's no one's going to take an existing shack and turn it into a data center.
No, but I think may maybe, not that I want to add another ordinance that has to be changed, but maybe we should review the change of use permit to make sure that if the use, you know, changes that drastically, who does the review then? Because you don't want that to be at the discretion of one person uh, or one group. You want that to be reviewed the same way any other development would be.
I don't think this, this probably won't clarify anything, but
Oh, good.
Uh, I don't think the language hurts because if you read the zoning ordinance, there is a lot of similar language to this in there for other uses.
Oh, I get it.
And, uh, if it does put an applicant on notice that the planning commission more so than the engineer, but the planning commission and the board of supervisors are going to want to know what this building looks like, how you're going to landscape it, what kind of noise is it, can they expect? That puts them on notice at least. Uh, we may have to tweak the land development ordinance to get some more objective criteria in there or something like this. I don't see anything wrong with having it in here.
Yes, my question is, does it belong there or does it belong as supplementary regs for that use? Or does or does it belong in the SAD? I mean, because my understanding, SAD is very general for for every use.
It is.
You know, like, like, yes, the same sidewalk and all that, like, that's how you get all these areas where people can walk now because they have these giant logistics centers or whatever, and there's all these sidewalks because the local SAD requires it. But this is like specific to this use.
Okay, but you know, I mean, and I think I just glossed over this because it was highlighted in green and it almost blacks it out, but uh, I guess, Alex, this is providing objective criteria if you go to these sections, isn't it?
Yeah, basically, this is like, like I said, kind of a cheat sheet. This is just giving them notice that, okay, you bet you would need to reference section three, four, six, five, eleven, seven in great detail because that's what's you're gonna, those are the objective criteria. So, yes, the objective criteria is there. Again, my question is just really, if you're just setting one up and you're not going through a land development process, which is technically never going to happen.
Right.
But, um, and you state this, but.
When we do the land development, no, when we do a land development review, we do both zoning and
That's right. So we would, we would check, under this scenario, we would check all these sections to see if they met the objective criteria. Okay, that's part of our review. All right, I'm I'm satisfied. So leave that in there.
One question further this, I noticed on Alex's, uh, sheet here, talking about the maximum cap used at one hundred fifty thousand square feet. Do we have that in here anywhere? I don't find it.
No, that was removed because there was a discussion on market feasibility and how that might be too exclusionary. And so the board had, I my understanding of the conversations, the board wanted to just, if it's conditional use in ED, that should suffice as opposed to saying over hundred fifty square feet, now it's conditional use. So it's permit, that's graphed it as permitted right in M one.
Okay, and I think most of these would come in, if we ever have them, at about two hundred fifty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Two and two hundred thousand per four hundred fifty thousand.
And that's per structure. That's not per.
That's per structure.
That's not per the whole use either.
No. And the board may choose not to have as conditional use in ED. They the board may say, this is enough objective criteria. We'll refill communities, you know, safe enough with this, so you don't have to go through a whole gearing process. And you already asked that question when you agreed to leave it in there conditional, so. Okay.
I was gonna say, the only thing that people should know, and it's very general, the burden to deny a conditional use is quite high. People should, you know, as you pointed out, it doesn't mean that we have more discretion over whether it exists, it's more discretion over how it exists.
All right.
All right, keep going. Go to the next.
On this point, one thing that the EAC is considering is, uh, some kind of an apparatus depending, you know, pertaining to land development change or class of land development, whether or not, or at what point might that development trigger an environmental impact study.
We're requiring that at the outset for for all of them.
Really?
The beginning.
Doesn't it? Isn't that a very expensive process?
Well, we think it's worthwhile.
Right. I mean, certain types of buildings, but for smaller developments, perhaps not.
Right.
No, for this one, right?
Yeah.
For that, for that sentence, it will be there.
Yeah, for this one specifically.
I think it's in there.
Yeah, we might look at it generally for other types of uses too, but at the very least for this use, we think it's more noted.
Yeah, and we're also thinking about how, what determines that environment study gets triggered when you guys require it, you know? Obviously, it's not across the board. It's just certain types.
Right.
Typically, I mean, those studies are required in the SADA that and as soon as they make application, that is part of the uh, submission package that they should be making. Now, many times, and rightfully so, the applicant will ask for a waiver from that impact study because he doesn't believe that he's going to have that great an impact on the environment. And then it's up to the planning commission and ultimately the board of supervisors to to either approve that waiver request or reject it. So by having everybody required to, and and another example, which is much more minor, but we always ask for a title report. We probably really only get one ten percent or less of the time because they just don't think we really need it. But in that ten percent that we do, it's already triggered. We know to ask for it and it's there. So that's how some of these provisions are handled. Uh, and not missed by saying everybody has to do it unless they ask not to. And in some, in an environmental impact study, doesn't have to be this thick. Uh, it can be a one-page report saying that we have no steep slopes, we have no wetlands, uh, it's an open field, we have no woodlands. And what we're proposing to do disturbing twenty-five percent of the lot will have no negative effect on the environment beyond and is permitted by the SADA ordinance. And that is an environmental study. So there's all different ways to handle it.
It's very similar to waiving land development altogether, like how how large was the disturbance with, I think it was Med Ed that he that ended up putting like some stone down or?
Yeah, we 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 waived ninety percent of the land development process for that. I mean, they had to submit a plan to ship what they were doing. But mostly the design criteria, we waived.
Right.
And also, certain, the the impact on the community should also be for a large project like the data center, we even want to probably enhance the center to include how it will impact the community around it. That makes sense?
For sure. I just, I think at that point, I mean, and and probably before this gets into final form where we're on the precipice of adopting it, we'll have to spell out some objective criteria. And I say that not having remembered if there was already listed some, you know.
But again, addressing that and not to prolong the discussion. It is implied that the board has already taken into consideration the impact on the community by permitting this use in certain areas. So you're not going to get a whole lot more out of that study. Uh, that's the first statement you're going to get in that study is it's a permitted use. Uh, and again, if you've got some particular current concern because it's a data center, well, then we got to get that objective criteria into the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, and all that's on there.
If you don't.
Yeah, so sections four and five have more or less from your conversation last time. That's the main entrance feature, building facade, fen- fenestrations that I sort of solidified that the board didn't, you didn't seem like you had any objections to that.
We were cool.
The next one, equipment visual screening, I reworded this entire section because I had pointed out there was some redundancy with, um, another section. And so I highlighted that in yellow, the reworded version of this, which basically, um, you know, visual screening for generators, uh, electrical substations, uh, power supply equipment, they should be enclosed. If they're not, if full in full enclosure is not feasible, um, then then they need to be screened by visually solid barriers such as a wall fence or building and then substations near major roads or residential areas must include a ten-foot ball of ten-foot tall, rather opaque fence or similar sized wall. And then the criteria for making sure that the screenings or enclosures must simultaneously serve as an acoustic barrier. So that had previously been in the noise buffering portion for equipment. It's been kind of consolidated here. The next section here addresses what the board have discussed about the setback. So it's not to be, this is just for buildings adjacent to residential. The question I have for the board is, do you also want that to be the parking lots as well? Because currently, as it's worded, the data, the data center building itself and then the substations and generators need to be set back, but there could be parking and that would only, you know, by the setback provisions in your bulk standard section. So what is the setback right now? And for bulk standards?
For, you know, I don't remember, but I think you'd be hard pressed to suggest that parking for a data center is more is more restricted or should be more restrictive than any other use.
Any other parking.
Any other parking.
Okay, great.
It has much less vehicular traffic anyway.
Right.
As demonstrated in the traffic study, they're inevitably generated anyway.
Is I is the board comfortable with three hundred foot setback for equipment and then two hundred foot setback for the data center building when adjacent to residential? So it's adjacent to another ED or M one use, it wouldn't apply. It's just a just for the residential properties. Okay, I'm back to my other question. What is the standard now, you know, for, uh, a building in a ED zone setback from a residential? What's the setback for any building? I don't know. Typically, the side yard setback.
Yeah, I I know.
ED is the same?
I know off the top of my head, but the front is sixty-five. I am looking up.
So I just probably one side.
Yeah, something on the schedule.
And is it else, is it no different to a to a different district? Right now?
I don't believe we have that by today, but we adjust them.
There's limited uses that have a different uh, setback requirement, uh, when adjacent to residential properties, but not a lot of.
Right. All right.
And I would say, before we know the numbers, is I think setbacks are generally less restrictive. Because it's more density in the commercial corridor.
Um, so in ED, in ED zone, it says the side yard setback is twenty feet with a little asterisk, if you add a twenty-foot buffer yard for funding for residential districts.
So right now it's forty and we're proposing two hundred.
Hmm.
Yeah, I mean, and a hundred-foot buffer yard. So three hundred. Well, two separate things. So the buffer yard in your current ordinance is twenty feet and then the setback is what, twenty feet? So.
Right, twenty feet from there.
I think in this, you could, you could have the buffer yard in the setback. So it wouldn't be buffer yard plus setback. It'd be buffer yard and setback. So total of two hundred feet. And a half would have to be, uh, uh, just.
Right.
If they wanted to include existing trees that were up, certainly to be fifty.
Vegetation.
But basically speaking, yes. I have no reason to think, well, it should be more than that.
I agree.
And my only question would be if we should do a quick analysis to make sure that there are properties that 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 exist. I think there are. You have to make sure that it's not eliminating the possible use because then it becomes a lot of everywhere.
Right.
Yeah, I noted that on on number four in your notes here that that's still pending and I can do an analysis and come back to the board.
Yeah, I mean, because if you work with Eric Cooper, he should be able to get you really quickly.
I can reach out to the county planning commission
Yeah.
and inquire. Uh, you can see it, everybody. There's a little bit more detail for utility crossing of the buffer yard, um, that I added on on page four of seven. And that's just basically to say that if the utility must cross the buffer, it shall be the minimum traverse distance and then only if every precaution's taken to make up for the lost visual screen by utilizing a screen wall. So they, so they have to put some effort into the process if they insist on putting a power line through the buffer yard. It should also the township can try their best to also.
Yeah.
I don't know that that they'll be successful, but you can try. If it's a, if it's a sewage pipe or central water, I think you can be much more successful in those cases.
Well, isn't that going to be? I mean, when it doesn't actually have any disturbance to the visual, no one's going to see the sewage line or anything. It it sounds like it's really only going to be a problem for electric, maybe.
They might have to chop down the existing trees to put this order line in, in which case then, you know, they would have to put a fence or something to replace it. So it'd be a little, you know, I mean, as opposed to just leaving it open for the right of way.
Right.
I don't know about the 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 power. That might be governed by, you know, superseded by the statute, which and you might not have jurisdiction there.
Right. It's fine. There we go.
Okay, and then utilities, I I emphasize, we the board had talked about for that the water needs to be public utility and there should be evidence of a will serve, um, notice. So that's not creating cone of depression in the groundwater, it's not to be served by well. And then on page six, the noise ordinance, there's The noise ordinance, there's there's been a. Provision added based on the board's discussion that references chapter ten, part two, noise and nuisances, and then the. That sentence, which says any provisions found to be in conflict with provisions of the noise um noise and nuisance section. Um if there's a provision, the more restrictive shall prevail for this case.
Maybe you want, I mean, this is probably a wrong question, but. It has two ways of saying whichever is strictly not prevail, so I think we should choose whichever one is. Most ideal, because I think the or makes it. Seem like there's two options when there's really not.
Yeah, why so many words? We can reword, we can reword that. And then finally, the um. The board wanted to be strongly encouraged shall be in there. And one of the provisions was deleted upon the board's requests. And then finally, um. I did look into the intermittent sounds provision that we that I that I had synthesized with the boards, it's very similar to the definition of. Noise pollution I've seen in some other ordinances. Where it's where it compares these um objectionable noises to background noises. The only thing I noticed that might be a little restrictive is that this is once uh greater than once every hour. Some other ordinances are like greater than four times every hour or something like that. Um so it's up to the board, you do you wanna keep that in there, because that means if the background noise is. I don't know, thirty decibels and this is ten decibels over that once an hour, it would be objectionable, so. I don't know if you want that to be in there, um your current ordinance defines. Basically this reference. So if you have intermittent sounds referenced, but you don't actually define it, it creates an issue, so I tried to create more detail here. So that was the only, that's really the only other thing for I wanted to deliberate on.
The only thing I I wanted to address, because I I don't know how to address that yet, I'll. See if y'all have any other thoughts, but where it says they should provide a continuous noise monitoring device. And and go to a remote publicly accessible online database, does that exist elsewhere?
That seems aggressive, yeah.
That that I believe is from another ordinance.
Yeah, that one seems like, I feel like we can't possibly.
We don't have.
I would strike that one.
Yeah, if you guys think that's a longer, we can just take that out of there. That's pretty much all I have for the board.
Do you have any comment or any intermittent?
I don't know what that means, I mean. I don't know whether there's something that would happen every once an hour, I mean. Could you say the same thing about a church bell or, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, it's it's.
Only upside down.
Well.
Only upside down.
There you go.
The main reason I went into it in detail for the board is because it's already a provision in your zoning ordinance and I tried to. You know, you could just leave, if you look on the on the right-hand side of page six, you can see um number two. That's what's current currently in your ordinance, and so what I did is I thought, well, that's not very detailed, so maybe we should add some more detail to that provision. That's really where this came from.
There.
Yeah.
I, yeah. Oh, I I would think at that point, can we? We we preserve the reference to the other sound stuff and then maybe we should debate that one?
Yeah, debated or to me, it seems like if it's already in our noise ordinance, that.
Yeah.
Same thing.
This this is in your zoning ordinance, not your noise ordinance.
Oh.
The right-hand side is all the stuff, the existing criteria for data centers in your current um zoning ordinance.
Right, yes, on the right, which one you s- I I was, I thought we were referring to the once an hour.
Yeah.
The once an hour was a criteria that I came up with and suggested the board.
Right, well, I think we should look at that as we debate where it says number two. Objectionable sounds, that that's in the current zoning ordinance?
Yeah. For this use.
I don't, for for this use that we have now, well, I think we should probably look at that as the noise ordinance generally.
I don't even know what hap- so what happens if they build it? And then. I don't know, there's a a dump truck that drops something. Happens to be every hour over a three-hour period and it's bang. You know, three times, they've broken the ordinance, I don't even know what you do, because it's a zoning ordinance, it's already built.
Yeah, maybe we should.
Sound ordinance is not in.
Well, this exactly, so the sound is where you'd have more power in this case.
And and I think we're probably, I think, better leaving it general, so that if there's objections, we can deal with it, if there's not, we will. Objections be won, so a lot of people object to it uh. And locomotive going by blowing its horn every day at the same time, other people love it, so it's really subjective.
The idea of having something so detailed that it but it never gets enforced because it's unenforceable. I think makes the entirety of all of our ordinances less effective.
Yeah.
Because there's too many things that can't be enforced and that can't be done, and then you have people saying, you say right here, you can't do it, and you say, well, there's no way we can enforce it, and then people. Get upset.
Yeah, so I'd rather not have it in there.
Especially if we have it in voice.
I would take out D now, and then I think we should highlight for. Future discussion. On noise, we should look at the existing noise references in zoning, that way we can.
Or intermittent noise thing.
Yeah. But I wouldn't consider it for this one, then I would take that. Out for now.
Yeah. Strike those two provisions in that section for you. And then the rest is, you know, pending pending an analysis of existing properties where this might be an issue, the only other thing is this disaster recovery facility.
Yeah.
Definition and. Currently. The the provisions you have in there reference both data centers and disaster recovery as it's as it's potentially.
So weird, because they're not the same or similar.
And that's that's really a question for the board, do you wanna?
Is disaster, is disaster recovery facility not something that would? You know, come into place in an existing use and you're changing the use of something? So like if there's a disaster. The idea is you might wanna take any of your giant buildings and convert them to being recovery centers in a short period of time. And having it be a lot of allowed use in the zone means that you don't need to go for conditional use. Wouldn't have to come before. The group to turn the Walmart into a um recovery center, I guess, I'm guessing that's why you call it recovery. Should I recovery one? Disaster recovery, so like if there was a earthquake here.
Right, my my question, my question is this, well, why would, why would that possibly? Be something that's not already permitted within one, a data center or two, any other business that maintains servers?
Well, it is allowed because it's written right here.
Yeah, correct, I guess.
Question that brought in because um back in the after nine eleven, they were planning to build. Recovery data centers here, it was part of a data.
Oh, a data recovery.
Not recovery, backup.
That's not what this, that's not what this says, it says.
But that's what I think.
I mean, it doesn't matter, we 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 should keep it, I just. There's no reference to anything.
Disaster recovery facility.
It's subject to the same thing, it's almost essentially, other than a couple differences in the use. It's identical to the use, I I guess.
Julia, why, so this is not, yeah, it's said it's for equipment, it's not for person, it's not for people.
Right.
Goes back to the dream of Wall Street West right out here.
Yes, I just feel like it's already permitted within the data center, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter, we'll keep it anyway.
Okay, as it's currently written, it only re- the new standards only reference data centers, not disaster recovery facility.
Well, hold on a second, I just have a thought there. Just knowing how some people work. No one's gonna build one of these anyway. Like, the only reason they would build one is if they wanted to say, it's a disaster recovery facility, it's not a data center, and it's built the exact same way. So you should make them both conditionally used in ED.
Yeah.
That's the only difference right now.
Right.
Good, good point.
Okay, yeah, so just to clarify, the board wants all these standards to apply to both definitions.
Correct.
That sounds.
Because otherwise someone could say, no, that's not what it is.
Right, and it sounds like that's exactly what it, yeah.
Is there anywhere where I can get this information regarding the noise part of this?
Yeah, the, well, this is just a, this is just a ordinance draft.
Okay.
Um but it is on the website, right?
A little bit.
So because Alex was requesting information from you guys before we drafted this, this one didn't get up. But once it's uh available and Alex has made the changes that we need, it'll be up on our website, if you go under resources.
Okay.
Um open township projects and you'll see it there.
All right.
For all of our other noise and um nuisance ordinances, we do have eco unit in township, so you can scroll down to the very bottom of the website.
I know where that is, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, with the board light, what's your next step? So this is round three now that the board's discussing.
We don't have to do another one where we go like this, my thought is you can get a. Draft ordinance based on this discussion, and then from there we will. Once it's in that draft form, we'll request that both planning commissions review it and then.
Well, we'll review it first here.
That's what I'm saying.
And then assuming we didn't miss something.
We'll hear it here.
Prove it for review by.
Yeah.
Approved, recommend it for review.
All right, thanks for your. So I'm I'm not gonna anticipate this, because I know there's a lot that has to go into this and we're trying to do lighting and signage at the same time. My hope is we get this in. January or February. You know, final review by the planning commission, so we can adopt by February or March.
Well, this one's probably further along, honestly, than the other ones, because it's just adding standards.
It's potentially true, but I do think.
All right.
Yeah, I think that sounds good, I mean, just real quick. So um signage, I know we're slowly working through that. Um but lighting, what are we waiting on?
I'm waiting on, the township is waiting on the Myra County Planning Commission's review that they sent. We're getting getting close to thirty days now, so I can reach out to Christine and and inquire.
But the township planning commission recommended it, right, I mean, they weren't good or? They wanted a preliminary review from the county before we have both formally do it.
That's correct.
Okay.
It 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 seems like the next step is we'll get the review from the county and then that review plus the draft will be sent to the the. The planning commission here and they'll deliberate and it'll go back to you as well.
Okay. This this references that too, so we'll wanna make sure that that's more or less done before we.
Okay, yeah, I I also referenced your existing SAVO, just in case this went before the lighting.
Yeah.
Because Michael had a good point, it could very well be the case for this is more advanced than the other two and there's a lot of revisions and this goes first, so.
Right.
Kind of anticipated that and referenced your existing lighting standards. And that, those existing standards will also cross-reference the new chapter, so you're good either way, in my opinion.
Thank you, sure. Okay, next, the consideration.
Question? So. I I lost track, I'm not sure. We talked about uh a that center and a disaster recovery center.
Yes.
Do. Do we have a definition for a disaster recovery?
Yeah, it's on, it's on there, it's on the same.
It is on there, okay.
Yeah, all we just did was basically say. Everything in here applies to both, so somebody didn't go, that that's an aponym, that's just data centers and I'm doing a disaster recovery center, which. Effectively is the same thing. But just a different purpose.
I didn't realize we had a definition for.
Yeah, it's right there, it says it's called a building used for the continued operation of an off-site business in the event of a natural. A man-made disaster that causes the interruption of that business, such facilities may include digital storage of business documentation records and other information.
Yep.
Someone could say. This is just for disaster recovery.
Right.
But it's really a massive.
Right.
Story, so.
Thank you.
Next is our good old friend, continuing our affiliation with the Broadwater Association, it's been roughly two weeks, they haven't responded to our letter yet, so Julia is going. To poke their executive director Stephanie. So can I hear a motion to table that again?
Motion to table.
Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Albert, questions? Call in favor.
All right.
Aye. Next, the consent agenda, which is the consideration to adopt resolution number five seventy-two, tax collector compensation, which must be set. By the February fifteenth of the election year of the tax collector, which is next year. And the consideration to approve the Marshall's Creek Fire Company Volunteer Service Tax Credit Program eligibility list. Do I hear a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Which member's eleven hundred, I'm gonna hear a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Albert, questions?
Yeah. This, based on the letter from the tax collector, this is a free percentage increase. Do we have an idea of how much money this is?
Roughly.
I see it's two, two dollars and fifteen cents per.
Bill, so it's.
Bill?
Roughly, yes, per tax bill, so per parcel. Then, so historically, it's roughly in that eight thousand range.
Eight thousand times the two dollars, so sixteen thousand dollars?
No, eight thousand dollars overall.
Oh, total.
They note that that they are compensated with. A flat rate uh from the county, a flat rate from the school board for the bills also, so it's not just us that compensate them.
And there's a three percent increase over last year. Correct, or over a period, previous period?
Correct, each one is three percent and this is three percent over.
Over last year.
This year, yep.
Okay.
So it's effective twenty twenty-six, it doesn't actually. Next term, because you can't change the compensation of the tax collector during the current term. So they're up for election here.
Got you. Okay.
Other questions?
Oh, I'll make a motion, oh, we've already motioned for, yeah, all in favor?
All right. Aye. Next, the consideration on the of the Joseph Widmer Land Development Plan, whoever would like to present. For everyone's sake, we're going to let you do an average presentation, all three supervisors were actually present when this was reviewed. And recommended for adoption by the Smithfield Township Planning Commission on the fourteenth. So. I'll let you do this at uh. Bad pace, then we will. Hear your waiver requests. Vote on uh. The waivers all at once, and then we'll vote on the land development plan with the conditional approval forms.
All right, thank you, I'm Nick Franklin with R T R S. Um here for now, we have a Joe Squidmer. Um Joe is proposing, and we're gonna kind of just do this quick, because I know everybody's kind of familiar with this project. Joe Sophie is proposing develop approximately half acre parcel located near the intersection of Joel Street and Milford Road. Uh the project consists mainly of the building, it's about a thousand square feet, there are six parking spaces, lighting, landscaping. An off-street loading spot. Uh stormwater management, conveyance facilities, as well as utilities such as water and soil. Um back in June, if everybody's familiar, back in June, uh there was four variances granted to the property. Uh one was for the setbacks for parking from the side of your lot line. Uh setbacks from the parking setbacks from the front lot line. There was the location for the off-street loading in front of the building, and then also the reduction of the landscape buffer along Milford Road. Uh just to kind of get into these improvements just a little bit more, uh stormwater management facilities are designed to cap the upstream water through two outlets. Uh which will convey the water down to a small service infiltration basin, uh discharging that water through existing stable drainage conveyance along Drill Street. Across pipe under Drill Street and often the uh behind that storage units, which is a low-lying area um in the township. The lighting is proposed, there's four lights uh posed with the building. Uh the lights proposed with the ninety would cut off the direct light downward, that will be minimizing any of the impacts to the neighboring properties. Landscaping, um. You guys probably can't see this, but the landscaping was proposed pretty much around the whole site. Uh basically providing a buffer from the neighboring residential district to the north, as well as providing a buffer along Milford Road. Uh that's kind of. The high level of the project, we are on our second review with the township. Uh we have about thirty comments left, which mainly consist of the waiver request, which I'll get into here in a second. Um some outside agencies, we have received all our approvals from the outside agencies at this point. And then some final conditions that um government chose if we are uh. We, so. Uh at this point, I'd like to read through. All right, bear with me, guys, because there's quite a bit of them, right, there's fourteen waivers. And I will note that one of the waivers that you guys have has been based off of the township engineers review letter, specific to the street tree requirement. So I will read the correct section when I get to there. So the first waiver is for site context map, that's.
Can I stop you real quick?
Yeah.
Are you reading straight from the R T R S, August thirtieth?
I'm reading from the one that was revised to October twenty-third. Pretty much.
Oh, yeah, that's it, revise, revise, okay, got it.
All right.
Same one, August thirtieth is above.
Great, so I'm just gonna go through the section and uh I'll leave a brief. Reason of what these are, I'm not gonna kind of read through everything.
Yeah.
Unless you guys want me to, so the first one is section six oh three point one point C point two J, which is for the site context map. Um naming all the properties and owners within a thousand feet of the property. Uh the second one is section uh ten fourteen, which is for curbs, having curbs being installed all around the driveway part areas um. And the street. The next waiver request is for sidewalks, which is section ten fifteen, natural requirement.
Hold on, should we take these one at a time, then when it's an issue?
I, given the planning commission recommended them endlessly, I figure we would hear them out and then go.
Yeah. But. I'm the sidewalk guy, but I'm okay with this. I'm the sidewalk guy, but I'm okay with this.
Michael, I was. There's just compromise on the sidewalks, they'll get to later. They were adjusted by the planning.
Oh, really? Okay, I'll, I'll. Okay.
Okay. They're recommending.
Alright.
He's been described.
Alright, so sidewalks are just apartment that have them on both sides of the. Of the street. We get into street trees, which is ten uh twenty-four point four, um some amount of street trees for parking spaces. The next one is ten twenty-four point six, which is a parking lot separation between the parking lot um and the building. Uh, the next one is for parking queuing, which is ten twenty-four fifteen. Uh, followed by street trees, this is a section that has been, will be revised uh based off of the township engineer's letter in our. What waiver request that you have there, it's eleven oh one point one C. Um, that's been revised to be eleven oh one point one C two C. Which is specific to um the street trees that are required. The next one is the parking area buffer, which is eleven oh one point one point E two. And then. We get into some for stormwater, which is the basin slope, which is thirteen oh one point seven point F. That's for the maximum of uh forty-one for the basin side slopes. The basin burn width of ten feet, that's section thirteen oh one point seven G. Is a lot, so thirteen oh one point seven point two point two is the minimum pipe size. The township requires a minimum eighteen inches. Thirteen oh two point four point A for slopes. That's for the maximum slopes of three one. Two more, thirteen oh two point four point B, which is cut hill slopes. No grading can be within uh ten feet of the property line. And then lastly is from the stormwater management ordinance is two twenty-one eleven, which is the roof drain connections. Uh, about disconnecting any roof drains from storm sewers. So I know that was a lot, that was fourteen waivers that I just read off. Um. Like was discussed here at the meeting last Thursday and the P C recommended approval of waivers as well as uh the land development plan. So we are here tonight to request the same from the supervisor, so.
Let me ask, just to do this cleanly, as procedurally sound as we can. Because there are. Two questions on waiver three and waiver seven, I'll ask for a motion to grant waivers. One, uh waiver request, one through two, four through six and eight through fourteen.
Make that motion.
One through, oh, I'm not numbered.
I think it's the sidewalk one, but is one of them that you're talking about?
Correct, the sidewalk one and then. Uh, the seventh one we have is eleven oh one C one C and eleven oh one C two. Uh, eleven oh one, one C two D, you mentioned. We changed one of those to a s- uh to two C. So I wanna address the clean ones.
Okay, yes, I'll second on, on, on. On the motion, which was everything except for those two, right?
I second my Mr. Albert, questions? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay. So let's talk about the sidewalk one, which was ten fifteen one. You men, I know the planning commission recommended and he isn't and aren't willing to grant the easement for the sidewalks.
Uh, the easement was also pointed out that. Uh, what wouldn't be necessary if we ever did put it aside one, is to cut down the trees between. Uh, the parking lot and the roadway. So there'd be a place for it, but um. The, the planning commission seemed to feel that was reasonable. That if we ever did it, we have to.
So I, I just wanna understand, and I think for Joey, just let me repeat that, so there would be easement, do, is there a width? For easement that you guys, is it?
I don't know where this is.
Five feet, five feet, kind of centered on wherever the sidewalk would go?
What is the standard, is there a standard for the sidewalk?
Well, the sidewalk probably would be five feet, but you need to be able to construct it, I, I would offer a ten-foot easement per sidewalk only adjacent. And put it adjacent to the right of way.
Okay, and understanding that. The numerous trees that we're providing for a buffer.
Correct.
Required in the zoning ordinance would be impacted by that.
Yeah, correct.
Um, I think that's something that we can entertain that if the site, if you guys ever came back in and wanted to put sidewalk down here, that would be at. Your expense, our expense.
Yes. Or potentially a developer next door.
Or whoever's.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's something we can entertain, I think that. We're agreeing with that.
Regarding sidewalks, just because I, I can't see the drawing, are we talking about sidewalks along Milford Road or sidewalks in front of the building?
On the road, long road.
On Milford Road, you have sidewalks?
We're not, we're asking for easement so that if it's years down the road, we want to, we could.
You guys would be allowed if that was something.
Correct.
Install, okay.
Just because I won't have to ask them at the time.
Right now, the ordinance requires that any land development in economic development has sidewalks next to any road. That is what the ordinance says.
I'm just thinking, like, I work along Milford Road and I usually people walk, but there are no sidewalks, so that's why I.
Right, or, or, I mean, I think. It sounds like we all are in favor of sidewalks generally, but I think the reason why we're granting the ease of not requiring it now is because we don't want. How many, how many feet do you even have with this parcel?
There's.
On street frontage?
It's about three hundred fifty.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want three hundred fifty feet.
The sidewalk, hey, we're gonna, the idea of this, of that in the ordinance is so that if there's a future large development, residential within, you know, mixed use. Or which there are some on Milford Road and they have no sidewalks and it's a shame and it should have sidewalks. Now they would have to do that or ask a waiver and we'd say no, in this case, we're saying, yes, you can have a waiver because it is slightly ridiculous stuff. But we want an easement in case. Fifty years down the road, the next door neighbor becomes a big residential development and the storage facility turns into a. Retail center.
The thought is to be able to do it all at once rather than.
Yeah.
Right now, so for example, Middle Smithfield Township, and then we'll get back to the, the, the two remaining. They're pursuing a statewide LSA grant, which would sidewalk two oh nine between business uh. Where's the Business Drive and Primrose Drive, so a good stretch along the two oh nine corridor. So that's potentially an option for us in the future.
Don't worry, the trees will be mature by the time we get to.
Yeah, okay, so. Then to cleanly do that.
I like a motion to approve waiver requests.
Ten rate from ten fifteen point one.
Ten fifteen point one uh condition on the applicant. Providing a ten-foot easement adjacent to the right of way of Milford Road, of Milford Road. Understanding that landscaping might be affected at all costs of any such sidewalk in the future was being born on the part of the township.
And just to be clear, is that we just showed easement on the plan or would you be looking for an actual needed separate document exhibit?
I think you just showed on the plan, I'll begin.
That's fine.
On the record plan.
Well said, and I second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Albert, second by Mister Love and time, questions? All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Okay. We have request number seven that we had on. Eleven oh one.
Point one C.
Point one points, yeah, what is the new, so.
So upon the review, the actual section, the waiver initially was requested. For the section in general, the street tree requirement in general. I'm in the review, uh the section that we were asking the waiver from is actually. For the number of trees, it's eleven oh one point one C subsection two C. So instead of, we, again, we were asking for where from the whole street tree requirement section. Um, in the review, what we need to request for is just that one requirement, which is eleven oh one C.
Okay.
The two C.
So I entertain a motion to break the waiver request number seven for eleven oh one C two.
Uh, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Albert. Second, second, Mister Love and time, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John, if you wanna run through the additional approval form, then we can.
Yeah, if I can find it, I had it. What do I do with it? There it is, okay. Uh, hopefully we can get through this really quickly. Uh, planning module, we don't need a planning module for this, that's correct, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Risk certification from Smithfield Township Authority, thus not applicable.
We have. We have an email from the engineer, the sewer authority engineer saying that our plans are. Sufficient, but I haven't got anything in writing from them as far as the.
Sufficient for, for what?
For the connection, okay, for the connection, a low-pressure connection.
Uh, so that's gonna be to be done. It's an email, I don't know, I don't know, just ask.
It's from their engineer, it wasn't from the actual authority.
Ah, okay, got you. That's what has to be done, uh risk certification from Broadhead Creek Regional Authority.
Uh, this is an onsite well, so it's not.
So it's not applicable. Monroe County Planning Commission Review, we have that. Monroe County Conservation District Review, that's not applicable.
It is, we, we, we have it.
Did you, I didn't, you don't have an A, you don't have an A or a D?
No, we, we had an E N S, we had to submit it for E N S.
Okay.
So we have that.
Okay. So you have an E N S plan, you have that, other stormwater management plans, you've got that. And the H O P.
We have, there was an original H O P from nineteen ninety-one.
Uh. Other permits, you don't need those. Applicable. Uh, letters, you will comply with. All the comments in our review letter.
Yes, we hope, yes, sir.
Need of dedication for streets, that's not applicable. Same one.
Is that the same?
Yeah.
Unification of merger deed, uh, don't, don't have any. Random easement for right of way, so you are willing to do that for the, for the sidewalk.
That will not impact any lottery accounts or.
Right. There are no business agreements. Maintenance agreement, the security, and you, you're willing to do.
That was a new review, right?
Yep. Uh, maintenance agreement, you have to do park recreation, open space, ban, new, you're going.
We talked about the field, yeah.
Monuments, pins or markers, I forget what we.
They will be set.
They will be set, okay. Uh, seller waivers, they've been granted as of this evening, which. It's the day.
Nineteenth.
P R D. You will sign the plan, you notarize the plan and or commission. I just need your signature on this, that.
My.
Uh, you are the applicant, you're the.
Let me sign for you. Why don't you come up beside me to be the applicant, I wanna come sign. Here, we all, well, then, just the conditions, yeah.
Need your signature. I was only involved, yeah, right down here.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to. Move the land development plan. According to the conditional approval form of November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Your motion, I second.
Yeah, okay, motion by. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joe, we're very happy you decided to move your business to Smithfield.
Yeah. Sure. Like no business here, you know, I was born and raised here, so. You're right on Great Mount Drive, you guys are the only.
Weren't you in Stroud before?
What's that?
Didn't you have your operations in Stroud before?
Yeah, yeah, they were disappointed.
Welcome home.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Father. Next is the consideration to adopt resolution number five seventy-three regarding the statewide LSA application for Shawnee Fire Company. So. I will entertain a motion, second on that, and then I'll refuse myself. Go ahead, your motion.
Bro.
Motion by Mister Love and time. Second.
I'll second.
Second, Sir Albert.
Probably did this last.
I'll can discuss. The dog.
No.
You probably did a previous, that was, it was a slightly different one, I guess, okay?
Uh, you did, you can do another one. Um, but this one is for Shawnee Fire Company, they're looking at buying a new pumper that's valued at approximately one point three million dollars. Uh, we're pursuing a statewide LSA grant to help to defer that cost. Um, the maximum amount of money we're allowed to apply for with this grant in million dollars. So we are going after the maximum application, a commitment letter from the fire company is still pending. Uh, but they're just basically using us as a pass through, uh, this will not cost the township any funds except for my time doing.
Do they need to uh? Can they like put that in your bank account for a while, or if they get the grant, you have to spend it right away?
Um, it depends on how, yeah, they've got, they've got time to spend it, um, and we.
Like time to raise the extra, the match.
Um, and there's also an opportunity, if they wanted to turn right around and request the funds immediately from the state, they can do so. Um, there are some benefits for paying ahead of time if you're able to do so, because the uh. Uh, company who is selling them for pumper will give them a discount if they have all of the money out of.
Alright, sure.
Um, so it will depend on their finances and how they're willing to receive. Um.
Okay.
But this application is due uh November thirtieth, and we're. Moving forward from there.
You've said, motion is second, I guess.
All in favor?
I'm aye.
Alright. Let the record reflect, I recuse myself. Perfect. Next was a discussion on the audit of the sewer authority, I don't know Bonnie, if we had any update from the last time we talked about this.
We did not, I reached out to P sets and I haven't gotten a response back yet, so.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Action by Mister Albert, second, Mister Love and time, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the consideration to authorize the advertisements of the twenty twenty-five budget. Before we do so, I just wanted, I need to have the opportunity to do a couple of highlights and note that. Once it's advertised, which in place what we had already on the website, including the PowerPoint now in the finance tab. There's twenty days from now. Where it will be. You know. Continue to beat up and then we'll have our meeting on December tenth. And then where folks can comment, and then again on December seventeenth, when we consider. The adoption of the budget, so. Bonnie, I'll let you. Go over a couple of things, we've got some stuff up here on the. Screens.
And Bonnie, this is the exact same. Budget you presented last, you did that last week?
Yeah.
Only details.
Correct.
Okay.
Some of the line item type detail of the budget, with last degree, some summarization. Um, just wanted to go over a few key items, as you can see on the revenue side. That we are projecting to collect, I mean, all means of tax revenue, about two point six million dollars. Okay, let's see, we scroll down, it's pretty self-explanatory, the line items. The cable franchise fee is a hundred fifteen K. Or.
And that's restart, that's restart. While we're talking about that, we haven't had any update on the back pay, right?
I've not heard from Ron, I'm not good.
That's, that's right, Ron's supposed to write a letter, okay.
Fine, let's see, with interest earned, we're projecting about eighty thousand dollars. Uh, we go down for charges of services, which is like planning and zoning, it's about forty-seven thousand. Scroll down a little more, bucks, it's about ten thousand dollars in revenue. Now we'll go down to the expenses. And we can go all the way down, throw up the government. General government expenses, we're looking at about seven hundred and thirty-eight. Um, thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. And that'll take you all the way down to four eleven, which is fire. And that, just so you know, the fire means workers' comp insurance, we're required as a township, class two township, to provide. Our workers' comp insurance for our volunteer fire companies, but we also split that cost with two other townships.
But that's on our ledger? That's, that's on our budget as opposed to part of the tax that goes there, we cover it?
We pay it, and then you'll see there's an income on the top. That is the.
For that.
Right, we have two shares that we get paid back from the other two townships.
Okay.
There is an income line. That is three fifty-five oh seventy.
Right.
Okay? And that's gonna be, yeah, that'll come back to that. Uh, where does that hit here? That's the gen- general government. Then we'll bring it down to Public Works, we're projecting eight hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollar. Public Works roads and streets expenses. The line items for those. And then for conservation and recreation, it's looking at one hundred ninety-six thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Our debt principal on the bond and interest is two hundred and thirty-eight million dollars approximately.
That's all the bar.
I believe, well, just the board out, the silver part got bought out.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah, it, it was one point seven.
Or the larger part. It was larger part, right, that they finished.
They, yeah, they, they've decided to shrink the payback time, um, I will need to look into that if I have to.
I'm just curious, for, 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 okay, probably know that, actually.
Cause that was refinanced in twenty fifteen, I believe.
Employee benefits and insurances, we're looking at four hundred and seventy two thousand. And then regular insurance, general liability, uh, cyber insurance, public official insurance, we're looking at a hundred and five thousand. And then the last, uh, expense account we have is the interfund transfers, which is a two hundred and roughly fourteen thousand, that's gonna be transferred over to capital improvement that we talked about last week.
Right.
That's it.
Thank you.
And then obviously we can go to, if you want, liquid fuels, if you go down, it's pretty self explanatory, liquid deal with the revenue comes out.
Right.
Uh, fire and E N S tax, let's see, again, the revenue for the fire is about three hundred and forty four thousand dollars going out, it's three hundred and forty four thousand dollars. In and out, uh, same applies to the E N S tax, it's about a hundred and eight thousand dollars, or one eighty seven five twenty two. So one eighty seven five twenty two will go back in on to the E N S providers. Capital improvements, uh, we talked about this in more detail last week, because we had the project list up.
Right.
Um, but we're looking at eight hundred and ninety five thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars in revenue. And then eight hundred and eighty six thousand, three hundred and thirty one in expenses.
You, does that mean you're not, so unclear, we talked about this briefly last week, those expenses do not include restricted revenues already received in previous years? Or, or they do, and you're showing that in the revenue as well?
I think the two hundred and fourteen thousand that's gonna be transferred from general fund is unrefunded. The six hundred and sixty seven thousand that was on the issue for the grant.
Right.
Capital improvement, reimbursements, that's restricted.
And that wasn't revenue that's bound cheap carried forward.
Good, almost all of it, right?
Yeah, uh, all of the income that you'll see, it will be reimbursements for expenses that the township has already expended. Uh, or plans to expend in twenty twenty five, and then we'll ask for reimbursement.
It's almost those grants are reimbursed, grants as opposed to grant revenues already on the, already on the books.
Correct.
For the most part, none of it is.
Yeah, in general, D C and R is really only the, is. One of the only people that will forward you money, and say, here's fifty percent of your costs, you can spend down. Um, everybody else is reimbursed, we chased. Uh, so like the D C, the L S A in particular, um, with all of the Marshall's Falls ones that we just did, we completed the project, we said, hey, we spent as much money. Please give us all of our grant money back.
Okay, oh, there's a transfer from general fund there, so the rest, okay, that's, uh. Okay.
And we won't, we'll only have to make like a minor change if. If the county presents its budget next week, so we're not going to know, maybe not even then, I will check. Uh, if we will get hotel tax allocation that we requested for the parks.
Right, this capital improvements and grants fund only reflects, uh, grants that we know we have.
Right.
Um, anything like the open space grant or the P M V J B grant that we submit for and are told that we receive and then have to complete the project within the same year. Can't be reflected in this because it's, we have no idea if we're gonna get it or not.
I guess what I'm saying is, if we do get the, the hotel tax allocation, do we have to amend the budget to reflect that? Because they, I, that pretty much is for that year only.
Once.
And it is a capital.
Ordered the money, we would have to make a change, but that would be a reappropriation after.
Okay, cool.
Um, we won't be able.
That what we would do at the end of the year?
Right.
Okay, that's my only question. Hang on, let's move on. Go ahead.
I just wondered, and you probably, it's, I could go online and find out, but what is the process for requesting bids for certain services? Is it done by the staff, uh, through the supervisors?
Uh, it depends on what kind of service it is.
Well, for example, the insurance. The various insurance.
Uh, tho- those are not, those are not bitted out, those, we have a, a broker who shops that. For us and then comes with the various coverages after they do an.
Well, he should be getting it, I mean.
Well, yeah, he, he definitely is, but I guess what I'm saying is that that's not subject to competitive bidding the same way that like. A physical project would be.
Mowing the lawn.
Like this, like the insurance and stuff like where you host the website, those are all considered professional services, which are examined by state law from. Uh, competitive bidding process, but otherwise, we put out the R F P, the request for proposals. And generally, all competitive bids are gonna be sealed until the date that they're read aloud, and then. They're analyzed, and then we have the opportunity to, we generally have to select the lowest bidder, the lowest responsible. So if someone didn't submit something correctly, or, uh, outright said, I know you proposed this, but we think you should do this, we can go to the next lowest bidder.
The floor for competitive bidding is usually about twenty two thousand five hundred, isn't it?
Yeah, it goes up every year.
Yeah, other than, if it's below that, we don't have to go through the blind bidding process.
Then you just get three telephonic or written course.
Thank you. Good for that.
Yeah, not a problem. We'll be going over that soon, I'm sure with something, so I'll have real world example.
It's a quick question, kind of piggybacking on our past question, um, so with the insurances, I'm referring to like, you know, health, medical, dental, all those things. I'm assuming that's about four hundred and seventy something thousand ones, did that, uh, just because I couldn't see that far, did that include like their part of our case, retirement matches and all that? Is that all ones in there, because it just had employee benefits?
Oh, yes.
So that's all in one line?
Right. But you'll see the pension benefit is forty three one ninety seven.
Okay, but, um. Is, is it, I'm sorry, because I can't see, is it that included in that four hundred and seventy something thousand, the pension benefit?
Yeah, excuse me, yes.
Yes, okay, um, and since the brokers are obviously going out and working for you, right, to get the, the best insurance rates? Uh, do you know what the, the health insurance, like medical increase was that you guys thought this year?
We haven't received that information yet.
Okay, so it's budgeting based on what they're thinking is possibly coming down the pipe?
We, we took our twenty twenty four numbers and added ten percent. I mean, we know it's assumed that it's going to be that big, but we always plan to, we'll lean our expenses and see how good it will work. So we should know literally any day what those numbers are going to be.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, that you guys got your numbers, no, 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 at ten, I mean, that's pretty standard. Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I piggyback off with Kara?
Sure.
Um, health insurance expenses, the twenty twenty five rates are, are released on November first, right?
But, but they are, yeah, that is right, yeah. So we're waiting on Teamsters Health and Welfare Fund, something they sent through the mail, so.
Got it, okay, I'm getting it, got it, thank you.
There you go. Alright.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, um, advertisement.
Mm-hmm.
Of this, or what's the, December twelfth, is that right?
Uh, seven.
Seven.
Summer seventeen.
Yeah.
We have a meeting on the tenth, and then we have another one.
And the seventeenth.
Yes.
September seventeen.
Motion, Minister Out Bear.
Seven, seven, seven.
Yeah.
Correct.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Levinheim, question? All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Julie, what is the meeting date for, uh, that one?
That's next week.
Uh, that's next week, that's November twenty sixth.
Okay. I'm sure I've got it.
Yeah, that's.
I'm not gonna be at that meeting, so.
It should be.
The only thing on the agenda, right?
Yes, and it, it, it will be the only thing, it should be relatively, uh.
I know.
So there is a meeting on the twenty seventh?
Yeah, just in case anybody missed it, it's on the door, um, but there is a public, uh, liquor license transfer class coming through from Wawa. Uh, it will be the only thing on that agenda, and that's happening here, next Tuesday, six o'clock.
Yep. Any public comments? Brad, Brad.
I could hear it, Joe.
Promise? Wanted in the record, I tell Carson.
Today's adventure on Gaffey Drive, the four axle dump truck came off, completely off the road while I was at the corner of two and nine. Laying on the home. It's, um, disappeared. And it's every day, it's Gaffey Drive, my cousin's been T-boned on that, on that intersection.
That's why I don't drive on it.
What?
That's why I don't use it.
I get you, but it's still a public road. And you.
But you and I, it's.
Right.
And if I wanna go to the post office, it's gotta go across the, anyway, I'm gonna be a pleasant. E N S, that reminds you, every meeting that I've done.
So Julia, what, you recently put a get together list, and we added that as a nuisance, what was it, can you just give?
Uh, so, yeah. Yeah, I tried to mention this last time, but I didn't remember to do this.
Um, so there is, every four years, the township has to participate in something called a hazard mitigation plan update. We work hand in hand with the county to do this, and it's very important that the township participates. Uh, because if we don't, we are not eligible for federal funding if the disaster shows up, so it's really important that we do. Part of that updating process is determining, uh, different risks that are within the county. For example, that intersection is very dangerous, um, we also talked about the potential need for additional fire hydrants. Um, parking in different spots where we see people parking on the roads, um, other stormwater concerns have been brought up. Um, everything from, you know, this spot on the road always ices up, to, hey, there's a bunch of trees in this one particular spot that are overhanging. It's kind of a general, hey, what's dangerous in the township? Um, so Monroe County and the township go through and look at this, and it's open for public comment period. It opened back in July, it closed a week and a half ago, I think, in November, um, so. I've got five from the township, and the county has a couple more that we're reviewing that will be put into that plan. So one of the reasons that that's important is that Pima, um, and FEMA to some degree have different mitigation, uh, grants that we can pursue. So now that that Gap V Drive intersection has been identified as dangerous, we can start nudging Pendop and potentially Pima and FEMA a little bit more and saying, hey. This is dangerous, it's in our hazard mitigation plan, can you please do something about this? It's a little bit more to wait, but that's how we're moving forward with that.
I'll hold you right, bye.
Yeah.
Julie.
It's, it's great. Yes.
Is Greg's Meadow Road, uh, Wilford Road on the list?
I believe that's the other one, um, I can double check.
I heard there was an accident two days ago, another one.
Yes, in the morning. Yeah.
Did we ever get anything back from the, uh, planning commission on the, on the vehicle count? I know they had a.
Um.
Rubber hose stretched.
Yeah, I believe they put them out, I have not received correspondence from them yet.
Yeah, they were out.
Yeah, now let's check when he, uh, asked about the, uh, other ordinance reviews. I agree.
I got, I have a question.
Yeah.
Because. I haven't heard anything mentioned, going uphillside drive. Coming towards two oh nine.
Mm-hmm.
The old brick house. There's the guy with the containers and whatever groundwork he's doing, and then he bought the Strums' house next door. And then going up to two houses, the house that was Mr. Carey's is gone, and the house across the street is gone. What is happening with that strip? Like, I haven't heard anything about people with burnits or doing anything, but everything is like gone.
The only, the only thing I know is that Barth Ruben bought, uh, some land there, which he's planning to build apartments on. And, I mean, I, I'm not sure, you know where his building is, the, the, kind of, uh, office building, a couple of insurance companies. And it, it's on the two oh nine. It's next to where the Classic Quality Homes.
Yeah. Right, yeah, but I'm not up that far.
This is behind that on the next street, so they have something to do with that.
No, I'm not, no, the, the, the old brick house across from Pierce's. Isn't that where the gentleman's house? No, it was in a, um.
We'll, we'll check on any permits that are in, in that.
I mean, it's where they, they took all the trees down from the, from the top of the hill.
Oh, right.
And logged it, and.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Like burying, he's burying ta- containers, and I have no, you know. It's very interesting, but I don't see anything being mentioned anywhere within the township.
So.
In reference to what the gentleman is doing.
In general, if you have a, uh, single family calling structure that you want to demo, you've submitted.
He's demo, he's not demoing it.
Well, you, you said it's got.
There's, there's two houses that were torn down, Mr. Carey's old house, and then went across the road.
Right.
But this, the brick house that she's talking about, the house is there.
Mm-hmm.
It's the one right next.
He's from New York.
They're from New York, and they basically, they logged and leveled everything on the one side of the house, and then they're burying containers. Like, like storage containers in the round, I guess.
That's.
Like shipmate, yeah, like ship.
Yeah, the shipping containers, and then he brings in big dirt and truckloads of stone and.
Okay, um, so in general, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look into it, but at least with the demo of the two houses, that would just go through the zoning officer, and that permit never touched this board. Um, as far as burying storage containers, there are certain things you're required to do. Um, if you wouldn't mind putting that in writing on one of our complaint forms and submitting it, uh, we can get that in the file and take a look at that.
I mean, they park trucks on the streets, you're driving around everything, like nobody's said anything.
When you see the trucks, see if the license plates are from New Jersey. We've had some problems with illegal filth coming in from New Jersey that's contaminated, so I'd like to know.
Confident.
They're gonna send you the, the form, that way we have a record.
Comment for Julia. Julia, excuse me. I'm, I'm, sorry. Uh, the, can we put a banner on top of the website, emergency situation? For fire, for any kind of township in emergency. We had a fire a couple of days ago, and nobody knows exactly where to go and find out, uh, status. Township is aware of kind of status, can we put a banner?
Um, so we normally use Facebook to get blasts out quickly, and with that fire, that's what we did. Um, I don't know if our website has that capability, but I can look into it and find out. Alright, thanks.
I, I just wanna get back to what Robert said was interesting, um, so they're putting shipping containers underneath, and he's saying they have. Something with contaminated dirt coming in from.
We, we've had a problem with several sites.
Yeah, but.
Where people buy contaminated soil.
Exactly, but if they take that soil and put it underground into it, so when you do a soil sample, it's not gonna come up. So that's something that we should look into as right away.
But we usually call the Conservation District, and they go out and look at it, because it's a violation of their rules, not ours, their rules.
Okay.
And I, there's several places where.
Challenging, it might be, it might be just faster, well, it's, it's, we don't have address letters now, and then, yeah, then we can just like, Conservation District.
I mean, it's chained, and now you guys just don't drive.
I drive down there, I didn't notice, to be honest.
I mean, there's chains and rocks and boulders, I mean, he closed off everything. I know shiny trucks, so I, I never.
Yeah, I haven't seen any work, kind of seen that there's, like, doesn't look great, but there's other houses on that road that don't look great.
Weakens. There's a big hole over there, yeah, and a huge, I thought they were putting in, like, another subject, no.
They had containers, they had, the containers are gone.
Yeah, it, it's huge, yeah.
I'll look.
Alright.
Behind the house.
How do you know they buried them?
They could say we saw them, I don't know.
Doubles. Yeah, we'll show you the form, and then we'll get on that.
Well, there is worries.
Andy.
It's a long shelter, I, I thought.
Uh, um, well, now they need, if it's an emergency.
Exactly.
Yes. And.
That's, that's recovery center.
Thank, thank goodness, it's, it'll be right up the street when they're ready to leave the shelter. Alright, do you want your motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
Mr. Levinheim, second, Mr. Out Bear, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.